But in Yatkin County, Wilkes County, around the guardrails, they put centipede grass.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't do nothing like the rest of it around.
See, that's where the signs all together is where all those guardrails are, so they're not in the middle of the roadway.
But they put centipede grass there.
Well, I saw it where it was paved and there was nothing.
In Winston-Salem, right where you go across the bridge, they got them rubber tires put in there, in the roadway. They'll go that way, go to bypass in Winston when you come out of Greensboro, go to bypass.
I've done that, but I wasn't looking for cars.
But they got cut up tires put in there. And you know, back about twenty years ago, they would run, the federal government was gonna run a program. All the used tires, they were gonna cut them up and put them in asphalt and pave the highways. And they did that. The ones in Arizona caught on fire and burned.
Yeah, it's fixed as far as.
Really?
Yes, sir. Sure did.
Well, they also made door mats out of scrap tires.
Did you see that new asphalt that they built, put building there? Water, they put it in thick and then water will filter down through it and run out under the side. They got it at the Johnson Memorial Hospital right over here, forty forty-two.
What was wrong with it? We had set it on the timer, because you can set it to, to schedule it to come on. And it stuck on mountain time.
Buck Jones did his back porch with some kind of solving.
It didn't come on at six thirty.
Concrete soaked it rain, it would just go right away. But I don't know what to call it.
They started that now. It, to me, it roars. It's loud when you run across it. It is not as smooth to me as regular asphalt. It's supposed to do the trick. When it rains, the water's supposed to go down in it and absorb all.
Well, see, I always thought that layer in between the asphalt and whatever the undercutting was was where it froze and popped up the asphalt.
That's where they didn't put enough binder down on the car to bind it together. Because now, on the, on the edge of this road out here, they've got a four-inch drain. Right where when the water comes out.
Good, how are you?
It's a four-inch drain that comes out and runs over to the side ever so often where the water runs down the side of it.
David, the man said you were doing such a good job that Winston Mills didn't want any trash here.
He didn't wanna put the side out there, did he? Are you kidding me or what?
That's what Randy just told us.
What'd he say, Randy? Uh, Mark Martinez, State. Yeah, he said that they come out and did an investigation and Winston Mills does not want, um, signs of traffic. That's good. I think that's good. I really do think that's good. That's, that's an indication that it's, that it's working, so.
You're getting the trash out.
Huh?
You're getting the trash out.
I had some one day where somebody threw out, not in Winston Mills. Where was it? Gosh, there was trash everywhere.
That was in Virginia Beach.
A hundred yards. No, it was somewhere I went today.
Well, a good indicator is the amount of trash we get each weekend. And it used to be, a few years ago, was always with, you know, a hundred and fifty or something like that. This past week was thirty-six, the week before was fifty-four pounds. I mean, I got them rooting around, find stuff. It's amazing. Anyway, I'm glad to hear that.
There's a house on sixteen highway on the other side of Wilkesboro. And you can, in the wintertime, you can look out there and it's, they trashed them, the man's yard. I mean, people live in that house. It looks like a trash dump in the wintertime. And when the leaves come on, you can't see it. We talked about it, how about it?
I still think we got, not, not to feather my cap, but I said, but because of the community service program we have, I think we got the cleanest town in Johnson County. I don't know of any other town that does this, so they're trashless states.
They're all talking about doing it. I don't know if they do it or not, but.
I haven't seen or heard anybody. If they did, the lady that runs it, who coordinates with the chief, she would probably say something. I've met with her before. She never said anything about it.
Those big orange trash cans, big orange trash bags.
Yeah.
Raking week comes here, fifteen or twenty of them to use it to park in those big trash cans.
I was, when, we went out there and I had them emptying the trash out of there the other day by hand because we didn't have replacement bags.
Yeah, there was so many in the middle room, because I put the last two in there.
Well, I didn't have access to it, but I was thinking about the same thing. And I would prefer not to do that. If you wanna do it, you need to check with DOT and find out what they would say. Because I don't want, you know, DOT bags used for regular trash someplace. I'm just saying. I don't think it would, I don't think it would look good. Unless it's go ahead and buy some bags. Yeah.
They're not that expensive.
No. What I did do was when we emptied the trash, though, I did put it in DOT bags, a bag. Tied it off and put it outside the park and they picked that up, so that's one time I did kinda cheat a little bit, but.
They ain't gonna say nothing as long as the trash is getting up.
Yeah.
As long as they don't have to do it.
And they don't have to do it.
They used to have prisoners that did it.
Sure did.
You know, they contracted them.
They did, they paid, somebody pays for it, they can't.
They contracted, all the grass cut down, but Jim says, they need to have a talk with inspectors that go behind them.
Yeah, because they're not doing their job.
They have to inspect it when they go behind them, but.
If they did, they doctor pay.
So many miles. The grass cutters do so many miles of that.
Well, I was. Thought about. You're in a gracious hurry. You can rest assured.
They don't let no grass grow under the tires.
We, uh, they, they came down Main Street the other day and then across the other pond. And my guys were, were just about finished and were seeing them coming right behind us. I told them, you best hustle because what is right now, one styrofoam cup is gonna wind up being fifteen hundred pieces if you don't move.
Oh, yeah.
But I've always said that those people that cut grass should have an independent inspector behind them, not a state inspector. State inspector's just gonna ride and look. Get an independent inspector out there. Now, Yatkin County and Wilkes County, they still use, they got employees out there, weed eaters.
Did you happen to drive by, um, Parish Bridge?
Mm-hmm. I drove by it the other Friday.
They, it looked good today. I went by, they stayed there.
They had it Friday.
Okay.
Seated, everything.
Yeah.
And there's no water running. I think they're on the other side now gonna run the sewage on out into development. Yeah, I told the guys they might be fined if they don't start. So they got on Thursday.
I hold this corner of the carpet.
And I think you should. You should tell developers that when they do something like that around the ditch, they got to put up firms. And they got to get it fixed back so when it rains, because the last five years, we've had such hard rains, it washes everything.
Right.
And those ditches up there are deep.
Yeah.
They even cleaned out the ditches. Buffer down that where dirt washed down deep, they cleaned all in that too. You shouldn't figure a fine, and when they come in to get a development, or to get a permit to build, just tell them, if it washes, this is what it's gonna cost you. We have to go out there and look at it. And maybe I wouldn't have been so noticeable. But when Ralph done something like that, when the hodge count, they did it. They went ahead and fixed everything right then. They didn't leave it late. They went ahead and fixed it, got everything seeded out, everything was fine. And if it washed, they come back and fix it. They didn't drag around.
Okay. I'll do it.
How close have we got to a maintenance or somebody that cut grass?
For what?
Still getting applications in.
We don't let you in, will we?
Do what they need. It's too hot to stand outside it.
I tell you what we need to do, Jim. Need to take that little John Deere and that road at my house, they need to go in there and cut it before it gets too big.
Okay.
Need to take and bush hog it because I got the most of it already, but they need to bush hog it on over as far as they can and keep it from growing up. If you can start while it's small, you won't have to worry about it when it gets tall. You don't have to worry about getting tall. So we're getting it by there. We need to get it done.
I think it's about that time. Guess we will call the meeting to order and come out of recess from our June fourteenth meeting. Uh, for an ordinance to amend, an ordinance to appropriate fund and raise revenue for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
I'd like to add on to the agenda of my conversation with Allen Warren today.
Okay. Leanna, do you want to present this?
Um, sure. So this is your final budget amendment for the current budget year, eighteen nineteen. And this is just moving money, increasing and decreasing monies in revenue and expenditures to balance out the lines. And what we've done in the revenue items, the appropriated fund balance that we have left over that was not used this current year was twenty-five thousand nine thirty-eight. So, um, our property and our property tax revenues were increased by that because we, we collected that much more anyway. So, um, that's how we balanced out the appropriated fund balance. And then the remainder of the amendment is increasing and decreasing expenditure lines to balance those lines and balance the budget. Anybody have any questions? I'm really glad to answer them, just based on your last, um, financial report that you received, plus anything that we've gotten since then, and what we know will be coming in between now and just coming Friday. So we will close the books this Friday for the year.
Well, your arable tax was added on, right? You added that much to it.
Right, that amount was increasing.
Okay, and then on the third back page, it says that the total decrease was a hundred and eleven thousand. That's just total spent.
That matches the balance on page two of the total increase. It's moving money from expenditure lines.
It's an expenditure out of fund balance. Correct?
It's the balance of all the decreases, which also equals the balance of the increases. We have to keep them the same.
Moving line items from one to another.
Yes. Let's go through the whole thing, because I have, do have a few questions. Go through the governing board.
Okay.
Uh, departmental supplies, twenty-five hundred dollars. That was an over expenditure in the governing board.
Right, and it also includes anything that we know wasn't billed since May thirty-first in the last financial report. So that includes things like paper products, um, paper products for the entire town hall, paper, copy paper, um, any kind of office supplies that we use, like for the council or meeting materials, anything like that.
Was the twenty-one hundred dollars, was that Mr. Anderson or just, um, fees for Brian?
Professional fees for twenty-one hundred dollars would not be Mr. Anderson. That was probably, that's probably the engineer. The line right above that that says legal fees, that's Mr. Anderson's expenditure line.
Then the administration salaries and wages, is that what we hired Wendy?
No, that's the additional position this year. That was what was left owing for the additional position that we had this year of administrative assistant. For eight thousand five hundred and fifty.
That's a decrease. I mean, we're taking that much out of fund balance.
No, there's nothing coming out of fund balance.
I know what the software was. That's the sewage thing. Equipment running, that our computers, I mean, computers and copier?
That's the copier.
We increased the part-time salary three thousand dollars?
Right, because we had an officer, a part-time officer that was working while we had vacancies. He was full-time. We have to pay the part-time officers, not the part-time one.
Eighty-five hundred is vehicle expense.
Yeah. That was just what it needed to be increased. That wasn't a total spend.
In cleaning and zoning, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
I don't know what that is, but I can find out for you. Do you have any?
It's not infocus, is it?
Oh, yeah, maybe. I'll find out for sure.
I'm pretty sure that's what I, that's what I thought it was.
But then, we planted in zone and the four thousand dollars was gonna be Wendy's salary. Well.
The addition of that position for the rest of the year.
Mm-hmm. The ordinance codification, is that what we paid to down payment on? Info is four thousand dollars?
No, your ordinance codification is, um, what's the, um, now you're on the decreased.
Yes.
Section. So the ordinances that go online through the Unicode, it was decreased by that amount this year because we no longer do the paper copies. We do everything online. We don't do the look.
The group insurance went down twelve thousand dollars?
No, that's what was left in that line because we've had the vacancies throughout the year in the different positions.
It's about nine, ninety-six hundred dollars a year per, per employee.
Okay, so I'll have to look on the stats.
We spent an extra.
About eighty-six.
Eighty-six. We spent an extra thousand ninety dollars on employee training.
These lines are decreased now. You're on the decreased section. So that's how much you're going down.
You didn't spend.
Right.
Then you got thirty-one thousand in the police department. Is that a decrease, did?
No. Yeah, this is all decreased. See at the top of the page, the following, etc.
But you asked, they're talking about forty-three thousand five hundred dollars we didn't pay out.
Right, because of vacancies over last year.
Let's point out one thing that's back on page two under police.
Um, if I could just put one in thinking about the group insurance. So at the beginning of the year, when the budget was approved, the amount for the chief insurance was in the budget originally. The chief does not, he's opted out of that. So that's gonna be a big part of it.
Biggest majority of the income from.
I'm didn't mean interrupt.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to point out, going back on page, I guess it's page two near the top, under police, vehicle maintenance, eight thousand five hundred, that's sort of what we've been dealing with the past couple of meetings. That's eighty-five hundred, if I, am I correct, and that's unplanned for maintenance?
That was an over.
Right, not routine, but, yeah. That's what was killing us.
I, I actually don't think you put enough in for maintenance on the cars. Police cars, not the new incidentals.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
That's right, we're decreasing, decreasing pretty well. I must say, I know we approved it, but there's never.
So, budget amendment number three. Motion has been made by Councilman Wright and second by Councilman McGowan to accept these, uh, this budget adjustment for the year end, two thousand nineteen, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. All in favor? As have it.
I'd love to next year, not to go this far. Hate to say it. It's a lot of money.
To not.
Not go to a hundred thousand dollars to make the budget just.
Well, we don't, I mean, we don't have to do this every year, but it certainly helps with the audit because things are cleaned up before the audit starts and they're just gonna do it when they come in anyway, because we're always gonna have, you know, twenty, twenty to a thousand dollars in one line and not in the other, so.
Before we get involved in the stuff that, um, that Philip wants to talk about, I just wanna bring up the fact that I got a call, maybe you guys did too. Kenny, uh, Kenny Jones did that regarding, uh, the temporary removal of City Hall. He was favoring something else and then the permanent location of the new town hall, he was favoring something different. But anyway, I promised him I'd bring it up, so I'm not be called you guys to. He was talking about down here off Main Street where it crosses the tracks and squiggles around where the oil company used to be located.
Yes. None of that land there.
I'm just letting you know that you called me, so there you have it.
Thanks, um, that belongs to Ross, Ross Ramby.
It did own, did belong to, uh.
Ross bought it back when it went up the sale.
Oh, did he? So it was owned by the oil company, uh.
They had a tar, a place that sold tar or something in there. And he bought it back.
I got you. Okay, I was unaware of that. But there's, that's a pitiful piece of land.
You ain't telling me that.
Okay, Philip?
We got, are you gonna do this ordinance here?
Yeah, let's do the ordinance.
Now, let's reset and go back.
Valerie?
Yes, so, um, what's before you tonight? We're proposing to remove the plan unit development option from the code of ordinances, basically until we can get the UDO in place. Um, just because it's, you know, they're getting reductions in lot sizes when they're using this option, but we don't have enough standards in place to really get what we need to get in return, which is, you know, higher quality developments. So, as you guys know, all the new ordinances have been coming in under the PUD option because basically, you know, they're getting the reduced lot sizes. And it's, you know, more beneficial to them until we can get stronger standards in place. Um, better streetscape, amenities, open space, all that. So we're just proposing to remove it until the UDO is in place. Uh, just like you said, so we can get some better standards. And, um, one, one of the developers, we actually had a pre-app meeting with, and they came in and we told them, we talked to them about current and what's being proposed. And Rick actually sat in on the meeting and they were, they're game to go under the new ordinance. Even though if they submitted stuff now, they would be under the current one. But like I said, from developer's standpoint too, a lot of it's just expectations and the process laid out and knowing what to expect. So that was good that they were even for, you know, proceeding with the new ordinance, so they'll kinda come in under that one. But, um, yeah, with the advice of Rick, you know, he felt it was important to try to get this option off the table until we get stronger standards in place. And it did go to planning board, uh, June seventh, we called a special meeting to get this done and make this cycle. And, and unfortunately, due to advertising, that's why last time we weren't able to have it on the agenda because we had to advertise for the, um, public notice. So, um, yeah, proposing that we adopt this amendment until we get UDO in place.
Well, I think if they come in and ask for R ten, uh, R ten is the least thing they can get.
And that's what, that's what this would do. So it would just be, we're not, you know, rather do a moratorium or anything like that. Right now, the only option that would be on the table would be a straight rezone so they could come in under R ten.
And not be able to get a special use permit to do a PUD. I think that's the way it should be the whole time. Because ten thousand square foot is small enough for a house.
I'm like David, I think R fifteen is small enough.
You recommend there's not this ordinance?
I do. We do need a public hearing on this, though. We do need the public hearing on this. There needs to be an actual public, open a public hearing for this.
Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing for a discussion of this ordinance to, uh, remove the PUD from our development process at this point. Anyone wishing to speak? No one has speak, so we can close the open forum.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Open forum. Either way, with no other discussion, do I hear a motion that we approve?
Make motion we approve the, uh, the ordinance to amend, uh, the code of ordinance, chapter twenty-two, article subdivision regulations, section forty-two plan, et cetera, et cetera, as proposed.
Motion been made by Councilman McGowan and second by Councilman Wright. All in favor?
Now, this is also gonna not let them get a special use permit, right?
Correct. For, yeah, PUD will no longer be an option.
But this won't be, this can't be applied to the people that's already. People that's already got them will probably keep them.
Correct.
But anybody that don't have them won't.
Okay, any other items of discussion? Philip, you had an item you wanted to put in the agenda?
Yeah, I, uh, met with Alan Wallace today and discussed his property out here on Wood Creek Road. And he said that he would be willing to work with the town and sell in property out there. They didn't have any idea right now what kind of value he would put on it. Plus, the Department of Transportation had not told him what they were gonna do, so he didn't know what. Actually, he could do, but he would be willing to work with the town and sell a pound, ten acres or so out on Wood Creek Road, uh, for town hall.
Behind the cemetery.
Behind the cemetery of the Peter Sands.
On Wood Creek Road, or cemetery's on the far side of.
It starts up there at the white picket fence.
Oh, I know where it starts. They's got a hundred acres in there.
And you got fifty trees. I think I'd have to pull that, that one back and put it there.
I think that's, it would work with. I think that takes us back to the discussion we had a few months ago regarding where we want to place it. We wanted to place it where it was visible and act as a magnet for commercial development. I've seen the, the property and I just, I just don't see it. My, my suggestion would be, none of us have really relocated a town hall before, I don't think. So I would like to see sort of an expert come in, the folks in focus. If we get one of them to just look at it in general, they don't have to come here and sit before us, but they can look at the, the maps of the Wellens property versus the, is it the Strickland?
Lipscomb.
Lipscomb.
And I.
Placement within Wilson's Mills and with the idea of as a magnet for commercial development. I would just like to have somebody that's probably done this before.
And he is looking into that too, and that will be included as part of future land use map and zoning.
Well, at that meeting, that, with those people, he made the statement that, that, that the town hall should be located in the center. And he, he made the statement there was, there's three areas. The area on the other side of seventy, the area between seventy and Wilson Mills Road and this area on this side. He said that most towns need to be in the middle. Most town halls need to be in the middle. That was what he said.
You normally want them where your density.
That was at that meeting, and then, you know.
Hey, also, at that meeting, he said if you start moving your identity, you lose.
Right, exactly.
Core of you. So the whole town.
This is probably him right here. He can probably speak to it, but it's not. Generally, you want it where your downtown's gonna be. It helps support other businesses, have it in a walkable area. And, you know, it helps even daytime restaurants and stuff. At least you have the, the traffic from the town hall, but also staff and everything too, so. Generally, from a planning standpoint, it's better in the downtown area.
Thought all of that was discussed before, and if you can tell me a good way to readjust downtown that's already here to create that kind of environment, I'd like to hear it.
And, and Rick is working on that. He will be talking about that and having, you know, set up and incentive ways to get developers to help pay for some infrastructure we're gonna need. But I was hoping he was gonna be here. He's here for our seven o'clock meeting, but he must be in traffic, so he's supposed to be here at six thirty.
The Wellens property does have water and a sewer crossing it.
Yeah, but Philip, do you think that the identity of this town needs to be behind the cemetery?
It's not behind the cemetery.
Well, there's a five hundred foot of road frontage there that fronts fifty-three acres of land and a power line. Road frontage between the cemetery and Peter's house, old house. And then there's a.
There's almost a thousand feet.
Pretty close. Well, it may be, but either way.
If you measured on G S I, it's a thousand feet.
And then if you turn around and look at all the overhead electrical stuff that's there.
And there's, same room, room to miss those big poles for.
It doesn't matter to me, but we had discussed this some time ago and it doesn't make a nickel to me one way or the other, but we'd already discussed this and everybody seemed to like the location and wanted me to make an offer to the man. Where'd, where'd all that go?
I don't know, but why don't we give the citizens a chance to put some input into it?
My feeling is a bit.
I kinda like Dave's idea too, get the guy in focus, get it, making an assessment.
Well, he should be making that assessment, shouldn't he?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, but how, how far in the future, when you say he's gonna come out with that, is that gonna be in three or four months or?
No, hopefully the ordinance will be close to being adopted by then, but the planning board meetings and maybe when he's presenting the future land use and zoning part, you know, I'll make sure that you guys know exactly in those meetings, but those meetings are, you guys are always welcome to attend. But he's going through that now. We've been meeting twice a month. He's coming tonight at seven and we're gonna be working through some more articles, but probably, I would say, within two to four weeks, our next meeting, he'll probably get in more of the mapping, which the future land use, Tim, two other gentlemen are helping out on that too, but I think a lot of it's gonna tie to the future land use because we, that's the whole point, is we want the zoning and future land use maps to be consistent, so they're gonna identify, you know, how growth should go based just on infrastructure and the network. So that's gonna determine a lot what he would recommend for which town hall should be.
Now, I'm not saying that I totally agree with what that guy said. I just say, I'll just make the statement that that's what he said. You know, I'm, you know, I don't.
I listened to him say that. I've tried to listen to everything and I ask everybody a lot of questions about where to do this and where to do that, and I can't find, and I grew up here and I know about every piece of land in this town. Who owns it and where it's located and normally pretty close to how many acres there are, and you can find it on G I S mapping. I can't find a location that's any better. It makes sense to me for geographic expansion that we're gonna have with what's fixing to happen on Strickland Road. They're surveying that. Now, that's gonna be developed pretty quickly, it appears.
Aren't they considering putting an asphalt plan on Strickland?
Yeah. I don't know that that'll ever happen, but that's.
It's, it's gonna, it's in the works. They're talking about it.
I think, I think our biggest disadvantage is the fact that unlike most towns, we don't have a, a downtown. Cross streets with, you know, you know what I'm talking about. I know. And that's, I think that's our biggest problem, because now without that, we have to look at a variety of other factors instead of just putting it downtown. And I like what you're saying. Let's see if we can get the citizens involved. Come on out here, stand up, say, I, I can't see it over there and give them the options. I'd love to have it downtown, but I also remember Leann at one point and a couple of us agreed that if we did it over on that other property on the other side of seventy, we'd be visible. Wouldn't we just be a sign in the dark?
And not only would it be visible, that's the area that's gonna be growing.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just made, I didn't make the statement to say that I was totally for being in the middle. I just made the statement that that's what that guy said.
Yeah.
That now, if you, if you put it on the land that, well, you're talking about, Jim, it's gonna be right in the, there's gonna be tremendous growth and development there. And that's where I think, to be honest with you, that's where I think the, the stores and the, and the companies that's come in will want to be. They want, they're not gonna wanna be over here. The question is, if we put the town hall at the Wellens property, are we gonna be able to have anywhere we can build around it? Is there anything you'll be able to be building around it?
It could be, but it won't, but it won't be seen by the road, and that's what I'm concerned with. We want, we want a grocery store, pharmacy, a bank. A lot of that is people driving down the road, they go, I gotta go to the bank. There it is. I mean, with that property back there, you're, you're not gonna drive by and see it and trigger that thought that I gotta get milk and bread, whatever.
An industrial park now should be over on the Lipscomb property back over in there. And you could have your bank, your motel.
Yeah.
And then when you go to, I mean, some of the people came in, representatives for these big pharmaceuticals, the airport's right across the street. They're flying their own planes in.
And the only reason there's been a hesitation in it, gentlemen, as y'all already know, it's gonna take three years for this project to be completed where you got access to any of it.
Wait, but I wanna go back to a couple of meetings, maybe even the last meeting, I'm not sure. We've heard from the citizens before, how come I didn't, how come we didn't get our, our input into this? How come we didn't know this or know that? And maybe we're failing there a little bit and not advising through the blackboard system or whatever we have as to some of the things we're doing. So this is a major undertaking, so perhaps we can hold off a little bit and get the citizens involved so that we know and they know.
Because some of the citizens are gonna be here acting, we're gonna.
Yeah, bring them in. Let them come in. Let them have the opportunity to come in.
People have opportunity to come to the meetings. We can talk about that and say, well, we're gonna have them the opportunity to come in. We've given them the opportunity to come to all the meetings, but they haven't come. I mean, we've discussed this in meetings all the time, and now they're, now they've heard about it. Now they complained about it. I mean, we, we have a meeting and we talk about it all the time. If they're here or if they're watching it on the, on the thing, you know, then they, then they, they don't ever come and then all this rumor going around, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that. Well, why didn't I hear about it? Well, you didn't hear about it because you didn't come. I mean, you can only, you know, they know we have the meetings here.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think so, yeah. I agree with, I agree with you. A lot of times I get questioned by people and I go, well, we brought that up at meetings, you know, you, you have the opportunity to come in and, well, I just heard about it, however. We still have to satisfy that citizen too, and I don't know, I'm just saying.
I just think that, you know, you can only, you know, unless they decide they want to come and learn about what we're doing and be a proactive member of the community, you know, they're gonna always hear it secondhand.
Well, you can decide to hold a public hearing anytime you want to. It doesn't have to be just because it's required. So if you wanted to hold a public hearing specifically for input on where a town hall should or could be located and you wanna call that for the July meeting and we'll advertise it that way and put it, you know, just like we normally do with any other public hearing.
Would we have by that time a better handle on what in focus is gonna say?
Well, I'll make sure the meeting that they're presenting, that, you know, that everyone's invited, so you know it's being covered at that.
So theoretically, by July, the July meeting, we could have all of this solved and have a direction.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully that will be probably a month from now. There may be a few adjustments, but how the calendar, their proposed calendar looks like, probably the meeting in a month, but.
I'd like that. I, I'd feel a lot better. Give them one more chance to come in, put it out of the blackboard system.
Yeah.
Solve it. Have the maps here for them to look at when they come in. Let them stand up, say what they wanna say. I understand what you're saying, but, but I'm just trying to keep the, the public up for, to a, to a minimum.
Do you want to do that at your regular meeting on July fifteenth, or would you prefer to have a special meeting for that public hearing where we might be able to do it somewhere bigger than this right?
Well, I was thinking like informally, they could come to the planning board first and then if you.
I don't know what kind of response we'd get, I mean.
Or even informational, like meeting, he could come just as giving information about what they're proposing or what he thinks would be best and then make a decision about type of hearings.
I don't know what to say.
I, I'd just like to see it as the July meeting, get it all over with.
Well, I think that's a great thing to do. It's just funny that two months ago, we sat in here and we discussed offering the folks thirty-five thousand dollars a acre to try and get a piece of land in place to do, and we discussed it with the powers that be, the real estate agent, and I don't even know his name, Mike King. Anyway.
I agree with you. And I mentioned, I said.
I know you did.
Said, why are we, we get a direction. But it's here, so we have to deal with it.
So, anyway. Whatever we need to do, let's do it. Got a motion by Councilman Wright?
I guess I, if I could interject, I, I would want to check with Rick. I don't think he's gonna be ready for any type of public hearing.
Well, I think there's more to get input from the citizens.
Yeah.
Okay.
And couldn't, between now and then, could he not give you his thoughts with respect to moving things around and looking at our situation without a downtown?
He's already got that thought in his mind.
Yeah, as long as he's got it, he can give it to you. You can give it to us and you can talk and address the people just like we can. Do it all at that one meeting.
Options for what areas would be available or something like that.
Yeah, do it all at the one meeting, get this thing over with.
Okay, we've got a, a motion to have a public hearing on the fifteenth. I hear second.
Second.
Second by Councilman David McGowan. All in favor? As have it. We do that. I hear motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion by Councilman Wright. Randy Jernigan's seconded by. All in favor. Mr. Jern, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Long drive for this.
Half an hour's gone on record. Kind of like days back when McGowan was on the board.
But I'm sorry, you're on a retainer now, aren't you?
Your cross is in post tomorrow.
That's good by me. I got, I got one man that can help.
Concrete plant down thirty inches of concrete, four two-foot round hole. Think, uh, how much?
Yeah, I can go down there and ask. Well, you can call him and ask.
Next meeting. Right, Leann?
Sorry?
Next meeting, right?
What's that?
Next meeting.
Oh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta make, I'm gonna. Probably six total, maybe. Oh, six or seven total. Yeah, I think so. Okay, no problem. Thank you. So I don't need more chairs.
I'm watching. Slide it over to the other table.
Over here?
Yeah. I sat and watched that girl from Australia win the U S Open, win his U S Open yesterday.
Do you want your cup?
Twenty-two years old yesterday. Whatever it was. P G A.
U S Open was one of the.
She played Austin, Austin.
Green or whatever.
Yeah, have a green. She, she played her panty off coming down the stretch.
We're saying iPhone rings, it's rotation. Are you gonna be around, smile? Okay, I'm trying to talk to you about all that. The maintenance or what?
Howdy. You need one? This morning, okay. Y'all can pull one of those chairs out if you want to. We got. The planning board.
I thought we had two.
Okay, we need to take out article eighteen in the books that you have and replace it with this one. And if you want to leave your old one here on the desk, I'll dispose of those.
Article eighteen.
Article eighteen, the whole thing.
Remove it out.
Switch them out.
This goes in a. Uh huh. That goes in. They don't have the thing across. They don't have that.
Because this one's already.
Down the road while they were with the dumpster.
This is the final copy.
You took out the power lines and cable lines, the power ten road.
How much did you check out? How much is power one did you check out?
Eight mile.
You can't.
All the trucks just went by. That'll be expensive mistake. Cut that right. Yeah, they took out, I know, they said the, the power lines slacked, and that's what caused the shutdown. Well, we got, Duke's got that, got it going.
Just the old one?
That's the old one. And now they got a line over by the side of your red from Spectrum they're trying to put back together now.
And now they got a line about the size of your wrist from Spectrum they're trying to put back together now. I see.
Telephone, how you know it's lowered?
Yeah, it was, the telephone was lowered and the rest of it.
Take out power. Huh? Take out power.
They said, I think lights flashed, but they're going to, uh, dinner and have time to check, make sure all the lights are good or all the connections are good. The dukes over there, Spectrum is over there. We're back in, the trucks are back anyway. Yeah, the trucks are back.